The Planning Commission Citizen Advisory Committee for the City of the Pole for our regular meeting on Monday, November 9th. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you give roll call, please?
Commissioner Ted Mulder, exit. Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Flank?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Fadula?
Here.
And Chair Barker?
Here.
And Robyn is here.
Do I have a motion to excuse Amanda and Dave?
I'll make that motion.
Miss Court, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they have excused. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, October 12th, for regular meeting?
Any motion approvals?
And a second?
All support.
And discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All say aye. Minutes are accepted. I need a motion for the approval of our agenda.
So move.
Court?
Court.
Discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is accepted. Are there any public comments beyond the items that are on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then, thank you. Old business, Grand Rapids gravel, 2014 Bowes. This is a continued review of a site plan review and special land use. Andy, you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if you recall at the last meeting, we kind of walked through and discussed the standards outlined in our staff report dated August 9. This is a 64 or so acre parcel on the south side of Bowes Road. Really, I'm kind of the southwest corner of the city. It's bounded on the south by the river and on the north by Bowes Road. This is a property that Grand Rapids gravel had owned for quite some time. We've been expecting this kind of application for quite some time. So they are proposing to remove about 322,000 cubic yards of material from the property, which would result in a 22 and a half acre lake. This, as I understand it, and this is based on market conditions, of course, but they're anticipating about a 10-year process for the excavation. And then when they're done, they would have a lake on the property and then they would... The plan is to construct either single-family or presently, the reclamation plan shows like two family condos aligning the northern boundary of the lake. So eventually, thinking long-term, this is a lake leave, if all goes according to plan, to be a residential development. Obviously, with this being a large parcel, it's bounded on the west by the Louisville Township Park. So there is some public interest in making sure that this is something that's done responsibly and that does not impact the park very much. And there are some concerns were discussed at the last meeting regarding impacts on groundwater, impacts on the city's municipal wells, some of which are located on adjacent property to the east. From our office at Williams and Works, our hydrogeological engineer, Dan Whalen, is present here, sitting right over here by the microphone, so he will be able to answer any specific questions when it comes to groundwater, the city's municipal water supply, et cetera. That was something that we discussed at the last meeting. He did have some expertise here to help answer some of those questions. We received some updated materials from the applicant on Friday. I think you guys got them today. I haven't really had a chance to look at them in great detail yet, but they have responded to some of the questions and comments from our office and from the Planning Commission at the last meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate, I think, to ask the applicant to kind of provide an overview of some of the things that have changed. And then I think we went through most of the standards live time, so I don't know that we need to do all that again at this point. If you get to a point tonight where you're comfortable moving towards a decision, I think my suggestion would be that you request that we prepare findings and conditions of approval and then you can entertain those at the December meeting.
I think that's probably a good idea. Is James here? Or representative?
Mr. Chair, I know there was maybe a man or two, so I don't know.
Okay, no, that's fine. I think from our standpoint, we did receive a fairly large packet of information tonight, which none of us have really had a chance to even look at, frankly. So having said that, one of our questions, though, has been the city water. And Mike, I'd like you to join in because you're probably aware of much of this situation as anybody. So I'd like you to join in. And we have the expert here from Williams and Works, and I'd like to have him maybe go through some of the information on the water situation. And it was Dave?
Dan.
Dan, would you please come on up and give us your name and address?
My name's Dan Whalen. I'm a geological engineer at Williams and Works. My address is 84th Street in Elchow.
Close.
I'm sorry?
So, you're close. One of the questions I think that we had is that the city wells are on the borderline, basically, their border with the project. And the concern, obviously, would be contamination of the wells, whether they go dry, all of those kinds of things. Marty, you might have had some other questions. Any of those kinds of things. So if you could kind of give us some background or a feel for it.
Well, I reviewed the applicant's hydrogeology study. I think they did a pretty good job. They defined what they feel would be the resultant groundwater contours after the lake is built. One of the comments I had is I thought that once this final lake elevation is settled, the contours, they showed a little steep going off, excuse me, because why that would be a problem would be for there's probably a small handful of some shallow residential wells up toward the north there. And while that said, they did revise some of their calculations and show, I would, my approach would have been to go a little bit more conservative, you know, rather than show the least impact. I'd like to see what the most impact would be, and I think they kind of did that. So there'll be some wells to the north that are, I believe, private wells still getting their water from a water well. Some of those are shallow, but I don't know that they're too shallow that they'll actually, it'll degrade the operation of those pumps and wells. Doesn't look like it will to me in any way. That was one of my comments, which kind of, it was a two-part comment, but it had more to do with the science that they used behind how they predict these water levels and change to the north and the parameters that they used, which are technical, but again, I wanted them to be more conservative, which it looks like they did. And I think, I think in general that there shouldn't be a problem associated with finding the water levels of the lake. That was my first concern. And then the next concern is the city water wells are just off to the east, pretty close. So the optics of that doesn't look good to me, you know, having a public water supply well field that is 100% of the city's water supply. And I don't know that if that would be impacted, if they could go anyplace else if there were some contamination. I don't necessarily expect contamination in this kind of operation. But the edge of the excavation for the sand gravel mine is right on the edge of where the city's wellhead protection area is. So I think in that sense, it's just close, and that was my concern. But if the city should expand some of their water withdrawals in their wellfield, they might expand out their wellhead protection area and kind of, you know, bite into the... The wellhead protection area is the area where the city's water comes from over a 10-year period. And in this location, that edge is right at the edge of where the excavation is. So if they were to increase their withdrawals, that could push that boundary out into where their excavation is. And also, again, is there a problem? Probably not, but it's close, and so that was my biggest concern.
If the city adds a couple of wells, does that increase the concern then?
It does.
Yeah, because it's what, three new wells we're looking at?
Yeah. If we choose to do that expansion, it would be, well, we have four wells now, one's a bypass well, so we would probably look at adding three more, at least. There is a potential to even do more, maybe, but I believe the study right, the study right now is three. And so...
I think the concern you'd have with the gravel operation would be, in its 10-year active period of operation, more from operational spills and issues. You don't commonly see gravel pits as a real, you know, major source of surface water contaminants, but once, once the operation is done and you have this lake sitting there, typically, it actually can enhance recharge to shallow and immediate aquifers. So it's not like you have to worry about the, the impact of the excavation impacting your, your city wells or not as go dry, but it's just in the 10-year period, they have some kind of catastrophic spill there and you're, you know, drawing down or something, you know, that's outside of...
That's rough.
But it's not really a long-term, it's not after 10 years. I feel like it's more of an aesthetic issue, the groundwater operations issue.
And do you recall, is that because it would get, it wouldn't get that far down into where our, the city's aquifer would be? Is that kind of the idea that you're telling me?
Well, I haven't seen, I haven't seen potential measure counters with the, with the pumping, you know, the cone of depression associated with the city wells portrayed on any of these maps. So I can't speak to whether or not it's pulling water down into the city, but the city wells are, you know, 100 something feet deep, 100 something feet deep. So, so I'm not terribly concerned about that. It would just be, if, if there were surface spills during the period of operation, and we haven't seen the cone of depression of the, of the city wells in conjunction with the operations here, it's kind of a little bit unknown, but I'm not like, I don't expect that you would be pulling it down, that you, you know, that being...
Especially in the long term?
Long, long term, you're good. I mean, long term, after, once the operations are done, 10 years from now, and you have a lake there, there are plenty of cities that, that, that create ponds to enhance recharge to the, I mean, the city of Dayton has done that, to, you know, to increase recharge. But, so I don't think it's a long-term problem, but I wouldn't be concerned about it in short term, I'm sure that's...
Right. I guess the danger there would be, there, after the, in the extreme, if this wellfield were baseloaded and you did draw in a significant amount of this water from the surface water, you could potentially have groundwater under the influence of surface water, and that would change your treatment plant 100%. But you've also got stony lake that's pretty close to your wellfield there, and if you have groundwater under the surf, under the influence of surface water, you would have been, you'd have Eagle already making changes to your treatment plant.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Groundwater does to go in this area, goes southerly, and so we're kind of off to the side. So everything, including this stuff that's happening at the gravel pit, its groundwater is also forming south, so we're kind of laterally gradient from this. But I don't know what the plans for the additional production wells would be. If they go to the west, that would push out this cone of depression, which I'd like to see also. That would push that out towards the west as well and grab more of that area of groundwater. Because you'd really have to baseload that wellfield. I don't know how it's operating. Yeah, and most of the wells now are toward the west end of the facility, so I think it, I think it goes, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think it's going east is where the new wells would go.
Okay.
So... Would you better... Yeah. ...your case with respect to this facility? Right. And I'm not 100% sure on that, but it's what I would call...
Mike, is there a timeframe to the city?
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of questions I know we had before. I don't see it, honestly, probably, you're probably looking 10 years, five, 10 years, I mean...
So the issue would be pretty well solved by then?
Yeah. It's, we're not doing this in the next year by, by any means. It's gonna, we have a lot of, we're still in the beginning stages of, you know, just what people think of expansion, and then there's other variables that are coming into the, to the, to the equation now, so it, it could be some time.
Does that answer most of the questions concerning them?
Kind of. How big is that gravel rock?
Hard to say. Where they're gonna mine is, is a shallow formation, maybe 50 feet big. It extends pretty far north, best I can tell. Once again, in the city, there's no private wells anymore, so there's no way to know what the geology is unless there's private wells or a driller will provide that information.
Yeah. So when you looked at your studies, did you look at our peak pumping? In other words, at peak times when we're drawing, we're drawing a lot of water for the industry here in town, residents, and in their own words, they're gonna lower the aqueduct, or they have the potential, when they create the lake, of lowering it two to three feet. If we're pumping hard, in five years, if we add the three new wells to service the townships, we're gonna draw more.
Who says 103? Did they say when they created the, that was on half?
No, it's, it's too much. Yep.
In the very short term?
Yeah.
I think, I think the biggest, and actually, short and long term, the biggest changes in water level in that shallow aquifer are gonna occur to the north of this lake. They'd be basically cutting into the water table, and once they do that, building everything there, and that'll slowly lower all those water levels as you head up to the north. On a two-foot incline? Yeah. I think, it's, it's hard to say because there's a lot of info that they just don't know up there, but, you know, it's, it's not gonna be this steep hill. The groundwater flow direction isn't gonna stay steep, it'll flatten out, and that flattening out extends further to the north. How far it goes, I don't know, but if it's one, two feet, you know... Is there a standard average declination of water? No. It's all unfortunate, it's based on, you'd have to do some hydraulic testing, you know, to get above that. There is some of that done at the wellfield. And so, yeah, a map of the cone of depression while the wellfields at max day would be very helpful. You can see how far out it extends, but it can't extend too much further presently than your existing wellhead protection area shows, because that's how that was made. Interesting for residents whose wells are 30 foot, one foot wouldn't matter a whole lot. Not too much. As long as the pumps set deep in the wells. There's a couple where the pumps are pretty shallow, but a change of one to two feet shouldn't. They wouldn't notice, I would think. And where you do notice is if it's that dramatic of a change in water level, then these pumps are great suction, and they wouldn't have water. But I don't think that's gonna happen here, just based on what I see.
Do you have any questions?
I'm not ready now, I'm hearing anything.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dan.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And in the meantime, I think, James?
Yep.
Come on up. You gave us a treasure trove of new information here. Would you kind of go over what, what you gave us? You just heard the wire report.
Yeah. So tried to take some of the comments from the last one, and maybe do the site plan and add some comments on it. So we can, I think with the new revised, the dump, drawdown was only a half a foot, by the way. So in the newest, in the latest environmental response to kind of some of those concerns, I hope that helped you guys. Some of the new things we did just with the site plan, we added the easement or projected, proposed easement for the trail on the south side there. So that's good. We showed the fencing where it is on the east boundary with the water plant. We had the berm going all the way to south of Close Road, beside where the entered stride would be. Then we did reach out to Jerry from the township about what he wanted on the west side there for kind of to block the township park, and he was good with just a fence. He didn't want a berm, he said, and I walked over there just to look at where they're playing pickball and tennis and everything, and you're looking at those, oh, is it the phone tower or electrical tower right now anyways? And then, we're not gonna be doing anything west of that, where the lake kind of, or pond is right now. We'll expand that pond, but not further west. So with all the trees and everything there, that's gonna be your best sorts of kind of keeping vegetation stability, stabilization and everything, we think. And if Jerry agrees and that's what, you know, if they put the money in for the township park, and if that's what they want, I think that makes sense. The only question I still have to get through with the easement for the trail, they, it's always been said that they want a fence just south or north of the trail, between the lake and the trail, and we want a fence for protection and private, like privacy and just security. And I'd rather not put in one fence, and then in six years, when the trail gets put in, whatever timeline that is, rip it out and put one in that they want. So if we can figure out what kind of fence they want and then work together, so we're only putting in one fence and splitting costs seems mostly efficient and logical to me.
Have you had that conversation with Dave?
I haven't.
When is their, Mike, when is their board meet? The parks involved trails?
Well, park board meets third Tuesday. Larry usually meets third Wednesday?
Yeah. Maybe that'd be a good place to get your answers.
I'll reach out to him in an email, but it wasn't like that, you know, biggest priority. There will be a fence, it's just, can we move where it is?
Makes sense not to put two of them.
Yeah.
Other changes, we kind of revised our plant location, if you've seen that in the red. I will say, it looks kind of tighter now when it does go into the future excavating area of where the pond is, but I think that makes, to me, it would make most sense not to just put all the stockpiles as far north and close to Bowes Road as possible if we're not gonna mine south of where the plant is on that west edge. So for the first five years, if we can keep more of the stockpiles and everything further away from Bowes Road and people, makes more sense. Stockpiles can get moved in a year, you know, when they be selling material, and then, so at the very end, when we are mining the very west part of the pond, it'll be closer to Bowes Road, still behind the berm, but to me, it just makes sense, I don't know that The other big change, and it was my fault, on the new site plan, you'll see that there is a pole barn proposal we had put in, and that's for like the maintenance of the loaders and break room for the employees and such. So it'd be 100, I think we put it in a 100 by 40 foot pole barn, kind of like just a maintenance building that would then, at the end of the 10 years, would be removed. Where exactly on this map is, is that pole barn gonna go? Because I don't, I don't see it out here anywhere.
Can tell the other, from the updated information, Marty is over here, kind of off to the east a little bit on the other side of the lake.
In fact, we can be one, two...
Yeah, in fact, it's on the second page.
This isn't the old match, and it's gonna be...
Over right here?
Yes. Location, because then we're, where am I, up here? But we're one, two, one, eight, three, one of the residential pieces is right now, it'd go just south of that with the hope that then we could use the same well and septic field that's already there.
So then you would use that driveway and...
No, there will not be a driveway on the Bowes Road.
So how will people get to the...
They'll come in up on the west there, that 300 foot pavement, and then south of the berm and drive through by the stack piles, like the roads at the...
So it'll be on your interior roads?
Correct.
James, I'm not sure how many other commissioners came out here, but I had a chance to stop out and see your operation over on the planning of the water. One of the, there was a couple of things that struck me about it. By the way, the gentleman who gave me the tour was excellent, and everything worked out just fine. Couple of things struck me, though, is the berms seem to be, to be closer to 15 to 20 feet, frankly, over there. Now, I realize it's a bigger operation, I think I get that sometimes. And also, the, the amount of noise that would come from the crusher of the big rocks and the amount of electricity, can you kind of go into that a little bit? Any of both of those things?
Yep. So the berms, they appear to be that big, and that's because you're in such a crater. Somebody recently described to me, they went there to take pictures or something, and they said, oh, they're on the moon. And it's because you were so far lower than all the streets that the berms from the interior seem much higher. But if you were back on the center point of Brewer Avenue or West River, Northland Drive or Southern Mile, they don't look nearly as tall from the outside. And that's the same thing that we think would be applicable here, is the pond is only 12 feet, I think, in the water, but there's a lot of overburn that we could remove prior to setting the plant up. And then, so on the inside, if we could drop that down four feet, but still have a four to six foot berm from the center corner of Bowes Road, when you're on the interior, those stockpiles, those heights would start much lower than the road. So again, your berm from the inside would look much taller than it would from the outside because you have additional ground that's been cut. The electricity, yeah, we pull a lot of electric voltages, we had to. When you probably first went and you went down to that little trailer, that was new last year, in April, maybe, we had to put in a new power line, power drop there. We obviously took care of that and put that in, but it's all MSHA certified, our electricians have to be MSHA, you know, it's federally regulated, and, and the noise is another thing that Eagle monitors, and we've never had a noise compliance issue with Eagle, which is public record, so.
Well, obviously, it would be a couple of dollars, so I guess we need to make sure that they're a poor contract. Yeah. We would definitely, any kind of, if this were approved, any kind of approval condition would certainly include that. As far as the noise goes, I'm not sure that Eagle regulates noise. They certainly do with, like, dust and things like that, but typically, noise is a, is a local, something that the, the local unit would be responsible for. Unfortunately, I've not heard of a, the noise permit coming from the Eagle, but certainly there's a dust control or air quality permit that you would need.
Permits, yes, but they do monitor noise, and they'll come out and make our employees wear decibel meters and such, and you have to be under a certain decibel for every four hours that you're wearing such, so.
Do you know what the decibels are for you know how to crush them?
Not off the top of my head. I can get it for you if you'd like, if I didn't know.
Yeah, I think I would. Does anybody else have a chance to go here? I think Amanda did, but I'm not sure. Mike, did you have any... I think I may, but I'm not sure. Mike, did you have anybody to go up?
No, I was gonna try and go up there last week, but I snapped on schedule, so.
I, in all honesty, I, I, the, the noise was not overwhelming, I didn't think. I mean, I, I didn't have any ear protection on. Um, and nothing along that line. Granted, I was inside a truck and, you know, you could hear it, but it wasn't outrageous at any time. The berm issue, on the other hand, is something that we obviously need to talk about. And the electricity, the amount of electricity being used to crush, making sure that we can handle it. I'm assuming we can, but... That was just something else to consider.
Ken, your hours of operation are just to five, correct?
Correct.
So the noise levels during the day were...
Right, right, exactly. So I'm saying, I didn't, I didn't think it was outrageous for now, but it was.
Cause the closest home zone was kind of near the park, that'd be the closest home to them, yeah.
It's not really for, I guess, but I do, I do feel like when I was thinking of this, you know, it's kind of, I don't have great concern from a long-term groundwater issue. There's a little bit of risk associated with the surface spills and then you kind of motorized operation and fueling, things like that. So it'd be, but it's really, it's kind of like, you know, aesthetically and, and so on, you know, so for the next ten years, do you want a gravel pit across from the park? You just spent money putting a new bridge on, you have the ice cream place there and all this stuff. Ten years, you know, it doesn't sound like very long, but it's gonna be someone's whole kid's childhood, you know, with the gravel pit next to the park. Twenty years from now, it'll be condos next to the park or something. It won't be so, such a big deal. But, I mean, that's really the trade-off that I feel like the city is making less of than, like, risk to your...
To the waters.
To your public waters by the way. I mean, there's that short-term risk on somebody dumping a bunch of fuel oil into your, into the pit and then you're drawing it down into your, but I, but without seeing exactly feet pumping, how much volume would put, you know, if they're outside of the wellhead protection area, then, you know, it's, it's a looming risk, I think, and that's...
Any other questions? James, while he's up here. Thank you very much. Again, thanks for the tour. I appreciated it. It, it really gives you a better, um... Although, and if anybody wants to go out there, by the way, feel free. Um, we will continue this, um, into December. Um, as you guys know, we've got a really full agenda tonight, so what we're trying to do is to get through the questions of, uh, what we had in the electric use, the groundwater, the berm, like those kinds of things. Um, and I think we've pretty well answered that. We've gone through, uh, basically all of the legal questions. We have not taken a vote, which I'm proposing that we simply, um, delay this until December maybe and pick it up at that point and go through all of the things. Uh, I'm just tired of being used. Well, we, we went through most of the new stuff here.
Yeah.
And it'll give us time to look at this, which we haven't yet because we just got it, so it'll give us time to look at that. And it'll also give Andy time. Uh, he, he's, he's heard our, our arguments and the questions, some of the key points at least. Uh, so he can give us a, a, a better handle on, um, giving us advice as to, uh, you know, and pertinent questions that we should be asking in December. I think it just gives us more, a, a better outlook there. So my proposal is that we table it until December. Anybody else have, Andy, you have any questions? Anybody in public have a question at this point, I guess? Okay. Uh, all in favor then of tabling it until December, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we'll consider a table until then. Thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ken, thank you very much. Um, new business, New Union Brewery Site Plan Amendment. Do you have a representative from New Union?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Thanks for taking the time to look at the information.
In our usual, um, excuse me, I'm just not... There we go. Okay. Um, usually what we do is we ask the applicant to line up in about five minutes to explain what you want, what, just in your own words.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, we're just proposing adding a outdoor pavilion seating area. Um, due to some of the stuff going on with COVID, uh, we wanted to have additional space available for people to be able to sit outside. We were kind of thinking of doing this anyway. And now that, uh, the old mill is gone, we have a little more room to be able to do that, accommodate some more parking and provide additional outdoor area for people to sit. Our current outdoor area is always very busy when the weather's, um, you know, decent. And we want to kind of make it more of a three-season, four-season area for them with having some additional overhead heating inside that covered area. So they can sit out there and be able to spread out, have a little bit more room for people. So that's about it. Not too much.
Any questions, Tyler, before we have Andy to review the, uh, site plan with us? Andy, you wanna go through, and, and this is actually a, um, an amended site plan?
Yeah, correct.
So...
So, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Yep.
Um, so a few years ago, um, Tyler came in and received a site plan and special land use approval to open the brewery at this location. Initially, this was for, um, kind of contract brewing in, in like a cake digger beside. Um, and that's kind of evolved over the years and we've kicked around some ideas for having, um, having pool or contract services for, for, uh, for kitchens and, and things like that. And so, and so the use has, has evolved a bit over, over the years. And it's certainly changed a bit more now with, with the other building on the property coming down. So there's a couple of things here that are kind of wrapped up in this amendment is that, um, part of it is that there's, um, that there's another right-of-way between, uh, four twenty and five oh east, or five oh eight to west Main Street. And so, um, this property, the plan is that, that this is the property boundary itself, but also be expanding to the uh, west by about thirty-three feet to include part of that right-of-way. And then, uh, as Tyler mentioned, he is planning to, uh, expand the use to include a thirty-six by forty outdoor seating area with the concrete patio. Um, so it would also extend it six feet farther along the front of the building and have kind of an entry area. Um, and then as he said, you know, part of this is that the, the building itself is fairly small as it is, and so this allows for some extra, extra capacity internally with, uh, with the pandemic. It's hard to fit very many people inside any, any building, much less one that's unlimited as the, as a distinct site. So, um, this is an amendment, so if, if it were not approved for some reason, you would still be able to continue doing what you're presently doing, just without the expansion, so keep that in mind. So setbacks are not issues. Um, uh, landscaping, you know, that is certainly something that, that the planning commission can, can take a look at. The previous, um, use, the planning commission did not require a lot of landscaping on the site. There was a, a little bit right along, uh, the M dot curve there, but because the, the parking on the site was, I mean, they needed every square inch they could get, so the planning commission would a little more leave some on the pond, on landscaping there. Um, and it's shown on our plan, so we're not proposing any, any new landscaping at this time. Um, new lighting is not proposed, and then Tyler said that, that they will be able to add some additional parking on the site. I'm not sure where that's going to be. So if this were approved, um, I think the planning commission should then request kind of an updated plan as far as where and how people would park. And as staff, we could take a look at that to make sure that it, that it meets the requirements of the ordinance. Um, those are kind of my initial thoughts. The, uh, site plan review criteria, I will just walk through those. Um, one at a time, Mr. Chairman, and then you want us to find...
Let's start with the sex one typically, or pass one?
Okay. Um, well, so in this, in this case, we need, um, we have, we repeated the, the special land use standards in here, but we don't consider this to be an amendment of the use because of the use of the property not changing. So I don't think that we need to go through the special land use, the use standards that are in here. Um, because this is an approved use, um, and this isn't something where I think we need to go through all in over again. We didn't notice if we're hearing, for example, that this is just a change to the site plan. Um, it's not a change to the overall nature. So I'll start with number one. Under site plan review criteria on page two, uh, that criteria is that the use is proposed will not adversely affect the public's health, safety or welfare. Uses and structures located on the site shall be planned to be taken to a proper photography side of the property, et cetera. Um, so as we said, they're, they're in the process now of combining four hundred west main, four twenty west main, and then thirty-three feet of that right-of-way that's adjacent to the property on the west. Um, this, so there were a lot of non-conforming issues with the previous sites. There were, there were several setbacks that weren't met. There were some building setback issues that weren't met. So typically in zoning now, buildings have to be a certain distance apart from one another. And with a lot of buildings being together on, on that property, did not meet a lot of those criteria. So this removes, I think, all of the previous non-conforming issues that were present on the site. So that's a good thing. Um, it'll, it allows the applicant a lot more flexibility to be able to, to expand and develop and modify the property over time. Um, so the outdoor seating area would also, uh, comply with existing setbacks. And again, it fits in generally with the character of what's in the C three district. Um, and we don't feel like the presence of the outdoor seating area, which is really what we're considering here, would impede, uh, the normal and, normal and orderly development or improvement of the properties.
Andy, one quick question there. Um, the, the combination of the parcels, the four hundred and four twenty west main, um, who actually does that? Is that the council?
It's an administrative function that happens at the city, so, um, I, I see it, uh, the clerk sees it as supposed to be a successor. And then eventually it's a process and, and then take it through.
Well, we could make that a condition of the...
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
And I think we did actually, and I think, um...
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Yep, so that is addressed, and I believe I've already seen the paper work on that. It's a process that I think has already started, or it would start shortly after.
Is that a little bit of a problem?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Chair, also the, uh, the street vacation is a circuit court action, so they would have to request that through the circuit court to vacate the street, the street that's between them as well. Is that, I believe that's... That's in the process right now? Okay.
That one?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that was in process now.
Okay. That would also be part of the addition, I guess.
Yes. Uh, so those are, are my thoughts on, uh, item number one. Did you want me to keep going?
Yeah, let's keep going on that.
Okay.
Let's go through all sorts.
Okay. So number two, safe, convenient, unimpeded, and will define the infrastructure and circulation shall be provided for ingress, egress, egress point there from the site. Um, so we don't think this will have a huge impact on, on most of those characteristics as it were. Um, there's gonna be more room on the property to move around with having not all the buildings there. Um, so again, this is an overall improvement, I think, uh, from the applicant's perspective and from ours.
Questions? Okay.
Number three is the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing on the plan streets in the area. Um, again, connections to, uh, Main Street and Hudson would be the same as they were before. And I'm not aware of any changes to other, other property would be accessed, so there's not gonna be any changes along those lines. Number four, removal and alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, there's, obviously this was a fully developed site, so there aren't any natural features really present. Um, and again, I think, you know, if, if the planning commission wants to, um, require some formal landscape either within the parking lot or on the building or something, or have the applicant approach the, or the city with a plan that we can look at to maybe increase that a little bit, so it's not so gray. Uh, that's certainly something that you could, you could do. Standard five, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements of the city will be met. Um, that's something that we include as a condition of approval and everything. And number six, the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan shall be maintained. Um, so the operation has, has, has functioned in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And, um, the master plan designates this area in a commercial and mixed-use designation, so I think it's compatible with the zoning ordinance, um, and with this East Master Plan.
Any questions on any of the, uh, site plan review criteria in one and six? I guess I would have a question. Uh, the only question I would have is on landscaping. I'm not sure. You can do it anywhere along a corner there, so it would have to be somewhere in the parking lot, if that's even possible. I don't know that it is. Um, I guess my recommendation would be to have Tyler and Andy get together and see if there is any possibility there. Uh, I don't want to hold up a, a site plan review for that.
That, that area is a secure area.
Yeah.
It's just very hard to... And what he's got now, they've got, you've got tinder boxes, right?
Yeah, I think, um, we're looking to do a little bit along Hudson there, kind of where that building was so close to the road and just doing some planting, at least getting some grass area back there and doing something kind of on that corner. So as you're coming into town, you see the back of the building. And this was kind of just our first phase of, you know, I, I didn't mention as well that we're looking to do a little bit of a facelift on the building, new roof, and tying that roof line in to that outdoor area, so it all looks cohesive. Doing some nice like cedar posts and stuff out there, so it kind of flows. We are leaving that tree up front and then tying in maybe like a little, um, green area just right up front. So we do want to make it look nice and appealing as well, so it is kind of part of what we want to do.
So having said that, um, I'll, I would make promotion, we accept all six of the site plan review criteria without any, uh, proof of conditions. Do I have a second?
Of course.
Um, all in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. Criteria are accepted then. And Andy, you're saying the special land use review, you don't really have to worry about?
Correct. Yeah, so this is not a changing use, um, or, and it's not a, it, um, if use on the property is a, is a brewery, or I think, I think it's winery slash brewery is what we defined it as in zoning. Um, and, and, and that's not, not changing here, so.
Is that the same with the specific special land use standards?
Yes.
On page four?
Yeah.
So you don't look at that either?
Yep. So on page four, again, um, all of our comments are basically just nothing's changed, um, on, on all of these here. Although, you know, the, the, the specific standards, I think, are, are helpful for us as we do the review to help us kind of guide the things that we should be thinking about. Um, so that's why we concluded that in our report. Uh, on the bottom of page five, we have our recommendation with a series of conditions. Um, the first three on the bottom of page five are those same three conditions that we put on everything. Um, you know, we're kind of kicking on the site until all the permits have been secured.